I promise I'ma leave. I promise. I promise I'ma leave. I, I promise.
Having appointed time of 5:30 PM, I would like to call Tuesday, July 14th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Order. Please rise for the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark, would you please take the role, please?
Will. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fultensy.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you, sir. Before I accept a motion for the approval of the Committee of the Whole Minutes, I would just like to remind everyone that this body is a professional body. We, I encourage everyone to treat each other with respect and within the rules of Hollywood procedure. And with that said, I would, Corporation Counsel, would it be appropriate, you know, I, I know there is members of this body that would like to speak on a previous issue. It is not on this agenda as far as for the people of the city, but if it is appropriate, I would like to get those things out of the way so we can get to the people's business.
Are they items that are on the agenda, you're saying?
They're not. I, I just, I know Alderman McMiniman would, would like to say something and...
No, I think the Chair may recognize, as you deem appropriate. Ordinarily, we would be doing those, like, new businesses, things, but if you would choose to do it now, you certainly, you know, may choose to do that.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I would like to recognize Alderman McMiniman. He, he did notify me that he has something to say, and I want to afford him that opportunity. I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Alderman Gregory. I apologize to the City Council for the words I used last week when discussing the new Housing Policy Board. I also apologize to any residents who were offended. I particularly regret using the sports analogies. They failed to properly explain the challenges we face in achieving what we all want, broad geographic representation on boards and commissions from all neighborhoods, as well as every other representation balance to the fullest extent possible. I strongly support those goals. It will make our city better and stronger. I encourage citizens from every neighborhood to volunteer to serve on the 27 wide assortments of boards and commissions. We want your voice to be heard. I have also apologized privately and directly to Alderpersons Gregory and Turner. Thank you, Alderman Gregory, for allowing this opportunity.
Thank you, Alderman McMiniman. Just briefly, you know, I would, I would say that, that God knows that, 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 that everyone, you know, truly, truly, that they're gonna be sincere, you know, deserves a second chance. Like I told you when we spoke, I'll never agree with what you said, but I do agree to work with you to hopefully find a understanding of, of how we move forward as a community. As bad as, you know, I would want to be mad and never talk to you again and all those things, you know, I know that's not the right way. I know that's not the way that, that my colleagues are, are coaching me to be. And, 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 you know, I, I want to be better than that, and I, I think you do too. And, you know, we, we rarely have time to, to address all critics or, or things that are said about us and our wards, but, you know, I, I, you know, I, I just wanted to get that time out of the way and, you know, certainly if any, any of my other colleagues have something to say, it would, it would be granted. Alderman Redpath.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the apology from you, Alderman McMiniman, and I think it was appropriate. We have to work as a body here for everybody to get along so we can accomplish the people's business. To follow up with that, I thank Alderman Gregory. Your comments in The Illinois Times were very inappropriate, calling the people of this City Council clowns was very inappropriate, and I was very offended by it. So I appreciate it if you would apologize to this body, because we deserve that too.
Well, I definitely would if I said, if I called you a clown, but that's why my phone is always available for anybody who wants to call and check my, 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 what I said, because I always stand behind it as a man. I guarantee you that. And I, I, what, I didn't call anybody a clown. It was misquoted, and I just didn't want to deal with, with it because I didn't want to do the interview in the first place. But I did to stand up and, and be truthful and honest about things that, that, that people had been hunting for me. And, 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 so there it is. It's out there. I would never call you a clown or anybody else a clown. I actually immediately at 5:00 in the morning called two of the colleagues that I talked to quite frequently to, to reiterate that I would never call anybody that. I'm definitely not that dumb to, to say that. There was many things in that article that were misquoted, but I left it, I left it, I left it what it is. So I would apologize for that, but that's not what I said, and I wouldn't apologize for anything I didn't say. Anything I do say, I stand behind, and, and, you know, what I will apologize for is raising my voice to Alderman McMiniman. I apologize to this body for doing that. That's not a professional way, and I apologize to all of my colleagues for that, but I won't apologize for things that I didn't say.
Well, we had to read it, and we had to hear from it from our constituents like everybody else did.
Okay.
So you need to talk to Mr., Mr. Rushton, who obviously did not have his facts straight because that was offensive to all of us.
Well, no, no, no need to talk to anybody because you heard it from the horse's mouth. I said it. I said I didn't call anybody clowns. So there we have it. All right. Are there any questions regarding our OBM contract? Madam Treasurer, would you please present the Treasury's report?
Thank you, Chair Gregory. The Corporate Fund in the month of June had a beginning balance of $13,509,74. We took in total receipts of $17,21,694. We had total disbursements in the month of June of $17,459,123, which left the Corporate Fund with an ending balance in the month of June of $13,71,645. This concludes my report, Chair Gregory.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, can we go back to number three, please?
I apologize. I would accept a motion for the approval of the June 30 Committee, Committee of the Whole Minutes. Thank you. Are there any presentations?
No, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll have the ordinances, ordinances tabled or remain in committee. Mr. Clark, could you please read those ordinances for me, please?
Will do. 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-276, 2019-430, 2020-049, 2020-067, 2020-134, 2020-153, 2020-181, 2020-195, 2020-207.
Thank you. Is there any action on any of these items? Just Alderwoman Connolly?
Thank you. I actually just have a question for the Mayor, if I could. On 2020-195, are you still considering rescheduling the St. Patrick's Day Parade, Day Parade Mayor? I, I didn't know. That's still something we want to keep as an option.
Yeah, we'll have to follow up. That's the same day as the Labor Day Parade, or the late, same weekend.
Same weekend.
So that's why I'm not sure of having both on the same weekend. We'll have to talk to the organizers. Originally, I think they were supposed to have it, I thought at the halfway point of March, so that'd be, what, September 17?
Yep.
Yep. And so they switched the date, so we'll have to verify probably with both entities to see if they don't mind one doing it over the other on the same weekend.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Is there any others? Now for the ordinances for committee consideration. Mr. Clark, could you please read the ordinance for CWP?
Will do, Chairman. CWP, 2020-254, an ordinance amending, an ordinance amending ordinance number 173-04-17 to correct the budget line authorizing payment with the Illinois Department of Innovation and Technology, DOIT, an Illinois state agency for internet service on behalf of the City of Springfield for a five-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
2020-255, an ordinance amending ordinance number 120-04-2020 by approving amendment number one to farm lease number 1055 with Dennis Codar for Water Division for the Office of Public Utilities.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
2020-256, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Reliable Environmental Solutions Incorporated for engineering services to perform a study in relaxation to the lakeside in relation to the lakeside asbestos removal project in an amount not to exceed $46,720 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
2020-257, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of relays for various substations from the Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $82,001.25 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2020-258, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of replacement relay kits for various substations from the GE Grid Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $117,253.89 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Do I have a motion?
Move for consent. Second.
All in, any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes, have it.
2020-259, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Engineered Pump Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $125,950 for repair of Unit 4 Circulating Pump B for the Office of Public Utilities.
I have a motion.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
No nays? Ayes, have it.
2020-260, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Andrews Engineering Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $358,000 for consulting services related to the disposal of coal combustion residuals, CCR, for the Office of Public Utilities.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Is this something that we put out for bid?
No, this is Andrews Engineering, their local firm. Basically, they're our resident, local experts on our ash ponds, so we go to them for everything. They provide, like, expert witness testimony in court proceedings, as well as understand, a full understanding of all the surveying and studies that have been done as well on that, so...
Do we expect to go to court on this?
We have been, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes, have it.
2020-261, an ordinance authorizing the City of Springfield, Sangamon County, Illinois to borrow funds from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency's Public Water Supply Loan Program for lead service line replacement project for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes, have it.
2020-262, a resolution authorizing the Mayor to sign loan documents for the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Public Water Supply Revolving Loan Program for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
No nays? Ayes, have it.
Public Works, 2020-268, an ordinance approving the final plan of Cooper Ranch Minor Subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
I'm sorry. Okay, Ralph, you made a motion. Chuck seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No nays? Ayes, have it.
2020-269, an ordinance authorizing a contract with John Powell and Linda Powell for the purchase of real estate located at 1108 North 10th Street in an amount of $27,800 in closing costs in an amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $29,300 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No nays? Ayes, have it.
General City Business, 2020-270, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Santos Falcon for the purchase of real estate located at 1110 North 10th Street in an amount of $33,000 in closing costs in an amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $34,500 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, have it.
2020-271, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses of $3,000 to Hanchel Professional Services Incorporated for relocation of personal property located on parcel SR0069, 1110 North 10th Street for the Segment 6 of the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No nays? Ayes, have it.
2020-272, an ordinance amending Chapter 82, Section 82.31 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to penalties and enforcement.
Move for debate.
Second. Any question?
Alderwoman DeSensio.
What exactly is this?
This is a, just briefly, this is really just a technical amendment.
Okay, apologize. This is a technical amendment to the code that there's been in the past a gap for police officers being able to write lake tickets or for the persons from lake services to be able to write, like, a parking ticket in the parks and so on. So this is just straightening up, and it's been actually talked about for some time, but it's purely a technical amendment allowing certain parties to write basically code parking tickets.
Alderman Redpath?
We'll get you some more information if you need it, or...
I just, the clarification on it is, I thought we dealt with that with the chapter, what is it, 62 or 65?
This is a follow-up to that, to complete the ambiguity. And again, it is just a technical amendment. It doesn't, it goes to the issue of occasionally we're in a situation where a question's been raised about the ability of a lake security person to write a ticket, or a police officer, can they write a certain ticket?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I'm, I'm not aware of anything beyond that. It's purely a, a technical modification to try to clarify that they both can write appropriate tickets.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to change my motion to consent.
Second.
Noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, have it, no nays?
2020-273, a resolution of affirmation of shared principles between the Illinois NAACP branches and the City of Springfield.
Motion for discussion?
Second. Alderwoman Turner?
Okay, so, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. And in March of 2018, the City of Springfield joined the Illinois Chiefs Association and other law enforcement agencies, I believe it's like '28 or '29, and signed the NAACP's Ten Shared Principles at, at a huge ceremony at the old State Capitol. So I believe that at that time, we showed our support and affirmation for the shared principles. So I was there, and, and I was excited about it, hopeful, I thought it was a good thing. But I also thought it would be a catalyst for change, followed by the addition of some accountability mechanism, but nothing followed. So now we're two years later, and we're going through the exact same process that we did in March of 2018. So the document contains no enforcement measures, and what I would like to see with this document is for us to use it as a starting, starting place and formalize these ideas with enforcement measures that would include disciplinary provisions, and I just think it needs teeth to support the words within the document, because right now, all we have is really words. And I'm not sure how these principles, or if they were, relate to staff, but since the document has been signed, there have been at least seven, seven instances of inappropriate racist conduct, and those are just the ones that were reported by police officers, and many of those targeting other officers. And another instance where four aldermen had, had a discussion about police conduct. Two were African-American, two were not, and only the two African-American aldermen were singled out in various social media news reports in, in some very derogatory, derogatory manners. So, again, I think the agreement is only as good as its enforcement capacity, and disagreement has absolutely none. So I think we have an opportunity to take some bold action regarding law enforcement in Springfield, and I, I would again suggest that we use this as a document's starting point to bring real structural change instead of ceremonial change to the city's law enforcement.
Will there be anyone else? Any other discussion? So just, just to touch on this, this, this topic, I would, I would agree that, that we definitely need to look at, at, if it's fitting today and, and how we can strengthen it with policies and procedures. I have had these conversations at length with, with, with the NAACP President, Teresa Haley, and, you know, I've, I've, I've never wavered that, that I think that we, we need to make some steps forward in, in the community policing. With that said, any time that we, that I speak on these issues, and I'm sure Ms. Turner or anyone else, I, I just want to remind it, and I just want to say it publicly, that this does not say all officers. We know we have some good officers. We know that. And we know also, we have some things that are not aligning with what we want for our Springfield Police Department to be. So again, I just want to reiterate that I myself, and I'm sure Ms. Doris is only speaking on issues that do not line up with our ideas and no one else. Thank you.
Any, any, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Alderwoman Turner?
And again, I, I, I hope everyone heard me when I started my comments about the fact that I, I agree with the Ten Shared Principles. I think that it's a good starting point. I was there when they were signed. I was, you know, excited about it. I just think that we, number one, we've already affirmed our support because we signed the, the chief signed the document, but the other part about it is, I just think that it's a, it's a real opportunity for us to do something pretty special with, with, with them and, and have some type of implementation action to follow.
Thank you. Would there be any others?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Redpath?
So Mayor, maybe you can explain to us, this document that came in for the, the Ten Shared Principles Building Trust, if this was signed by our Chief of Police and, and other law enforcement agencies, how come nothing has came out of this? And I'm not throwing, casting blame, I, I just really need to know, because I, there obviously is some, some concerns about that.
Yeah, actually, the, the reason it's brought forward, the NAACP requested it be affirmed by the City Council, you know, the chief did sign it, as Alderwoman Turner had said, and they looked at this as a reaffirmation of that commitment. And then in those discussions with the Police Department, you know, they did mention, as Alderwoman Turner suggested, what else, what's next steps, you know, with regards to what direction are we going to take? So I'm sure the chief's going to come with recommendations on how they would take a look at internal policies, what changes would be made at a later date. I don't know if Assistant Chief Scarlett wants to add anything to that, but that is pretty much the conversation, the request by Bob Moore to have the City Council affirm the Ten Shared Principles since it hadn't been formally by the council previously.
Well, it's hard to do if we don't know what we're voting on, because there's, there's really no content to this as far as what you, if what we've talked about. So...
Was that circulated? The Ten?
Can you explain that, Corporation Counsel?
The, just very briefly, a copy of the resolution contains the principles, you know, listed out in the resolution.
I can't read it because the, the type on it is so small, I can't see what, what it even says.
It would have been circulated through the normal, you know, through the normal process, the resolution.
Okay.
Not until right now, no. This was on our desks when we got in tonight, so...
Yeah, we, we haven't seen it. This is the first I've seen of it laying here.
Well, I, I do know Jeanette, when I came in, she was trying to make it bigger.
I'm sorry, it's 2020-273. It was just circulated, you know, through the normal, yeah, through the, through the normal process. Mayor, there's just a copy if you'd like.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Alderman McMiniman?
I think the sheet that was at our work areas here is a repeat of what's in the ordinance itself. It's just a restatement of what's in the ordinance. The ordinance lists 10 principles on the ordinance sheet at 2020-273, and then the handout that was on our, each of our desks is the same 10 principles, but with the signatures of each of the police chiefs at the time they signed it, back in March 22 of 2019.
Alderman, I think you should have a copy, and if not, we'll make sure that it's circulated again. You should have a copy of 2020-273, which is entitled "A Resolution of Affirmation for Shared Principles."
Chair?
Alderwoman Connolly?
Thanks. Alderwoman Turner, I, I appreciate your thoughts on this. Obviously, I was not at the table or at the horseshoe when this, when this was originally adopted. I will say, in my experience, government does tend to move slowly, but I think two years to reaffirm something is, is a bit too slow, and, and I think that this is, as you rightfully point out, an opportunity for us to do more than affirm 2018's action, but to take 2020's actions and, and, and move forward with, with, in cooperation with our, our Police Department, with their training divisions, to, to see what implementation steps. I, I, I deal with rules all the time. That's, that's my everyday job, and, and, and I know it's, the implementation is where things get real. So I appreciate your comments on this. I support them entirely, and I, I would second your, your thoughts that this is, this is, you know, I appreciate that this happened in 2018, and this, this was our start, but two years, a little over two years later, we need to be looking for the next steps. Thank you.
And, and if I, no, I'm sorry. W G, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Is it hard if I speak?
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to comment on a few things. First and foremost, we, as a police department, do value those 10 principles, and I think it's important that not only do our citizens understand that, but each of you understand that. To your point, Alderwoman Turner, there have been instances of perceived race-related problems within our agency. We take those very seriously, and we will deal with those as they come. And I think the point is that within those 10 shared principles, it says that we're not going to tolerate that, that we're not going to accept that. When we find those instances happening within our organization, we will take a firm stance on those and deal with that. And I think that's very important that the citizens of this city recognize that. We're not perfect. We will continue to police our own, and we'll do a good job of that. I think that these 10 shared principles are being developed within the culture of our organization. We unveiled them when they came out. It was actually March of 2018. It was actually March of 2019 is when the document was signed. We continue, we've added these now to our training tasks for our new officers. So, one of the training tasks will be understanding these ten principles, as well as the Springfield Police Department vision and philosophy. I think it's important that our brand-new officers understand that from ground zero. This is what is accepted in our organization, this is what is not accepted within our organization. And as we begin to, you know, develop that culture within our agency, I'm hopeful for change. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that I have.
Chief, Chief Scarlett, could you tell us, there was, there was, there was, what'd you say, eight doors?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. Could you tell us how those are, are they already handled? Are those situations already under investigation?
And it's, obviously, I can't talk specifics as far as the, each case. Some of them have been handled, some of them have been handled through our Internal Affairs section, some of them have been handled by HR's division as well, so. But, again, each one of those allegations, we take seriously, and we, we deal with it.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. And thank you, Chief, for coming and speaking. I appreciate this. And and I appreciate the the emphasis on on new training for for recruits as you bring them in, and I think it's really critical. What you didn't mention, and I think is is also is important, is is retraining and ongoing continuing education for existing officers. So, you know, I'm, I don't want to make an assumption or put words in your mouth that that this is, is part of ongoing training that we're doing for our officers. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And there, there are mandates within Illinois law as far as the type and amount of training that law enforcement must have as it pertains to cultural competency, procedural justice, implicit bias training, which we actually have scheduled for coming up this year. So, yes, this is ongoing training for our entire agency. Starts at the ground level, continues throughout the officer's career, as it's important that that message is hammered home.
Okay, because I I do, it's not just bias, it's, you know, one of these ten pillars talks about de-escalation training. So, and again, I understand that training is an expense for the police department. I personally would be very supportive of additional training so that we know that your officers are given the best tools. I think a lot of times, our our own officers are the best tool that we have. So, how frequently do they get, do existing officers get training on on de-escalation techniques and and those sorts of reductions in, I guess, reduction in tension in a situation?
So, let me just point something out. You've experienced firsthand how valuable our trainers are. You went through the citizens' police academy. Me, you understand.
And it was a wonderful experience, and I would really, again, strongly encourage, when we're able to do that again, that that city council members do.
So, you had the, you had the opportunity to experience training by our Training Academy, specifically Brandon Golden and some additional officers that were out there. We have five in-service dates each year that officers attend, so that's 40 hours of training there, as well as additional training. De-escalation training has been rewritten into our use-of-force policy. It's now within that policy that gets reviewed annually. Additionally, we have annual training where our officers are subjected to scenarios, whether that be a force-on-force or our training simulator to, again, practice that de-escalation techniques.
Yes, and I, I had the the pleasure of your, your training simulator, that de-escalation simulator, that is, that was interesting.
Powerful piece of equipment.
Yes, it is. But when you say five days, does that cover, is that enough time to cover the entire force?
Let me rephrase that. Each officer gets five days of training over the course of a year. So it's, there are five separate in-service days carried on throughout the year. So you might go March, April, May, and then October, November. So each officer would attend every one of those.
And just, just for kind of a general picture, how many other topics are covered when you do?
There are several mandated training topics. We always cover, use of force is the big one. Trying to think off the top of my head, some other stuff that, sexual harassment policy is stuff that we cover. There are a myriad of training topics.
And I guess, I guess my point is, is that you have a lot on your plate.
Oh, absolutely.
And so, you know, if if five days of training, well, it sounds like a lot. I mean, I want to just make sure that, that as a council, that we're informed if you, if additional training is something that's required, and that's obviously looking forward and down the road, but I I I think that, you know, continuing education is critical for any profession.
Sure, and let me just speak on to that continuing education and additional training. So we do have a training budget that you all have the pleasure of seeing each year come budget time, and that money is specifically designed for additional courses that may provide, you know, we may set this officer up to be an instructor on implicit bias or use of force, and then they come back and they teach the rest of our officers. So, yes, there is a training budget. We do send our officers out for continuing education with the, with the hopes that they bring that back and train us as well.
So it's, it's good to see that there is opportunity for, as Alderwoman Turner pointed out, to get more detail on on implementation of of these ten principles.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Chair.
Alderwoman Winslow, then hand out.
Thank you, Chair. I think the point that Alderwoman Turner is trying to make is that we signed these last March, and in the last year, we've had at least seven incidents of racial activities, derogatory racial incidents, within the Springfield Police Department. So, this paper is only as good as our actions, and it's pretty pointless to reaffirm something that isn't taking place right now. And that's just my feeling on it. I think the the concern, and stop me, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we can put anything we want on a piece of paper and say, we're reaffirming this, but if we're not actually doing it, it doesn't mean anything. So, you know, to me, some of the recent things that we've seen don't stand this, doesn't stand up to this. This doesn't hold up. So we need to do more than just put some words on paper.
I agree 100%. And as a result of the multiple, two of those instances, we've had additional roll-call training on various policies within our organization. And I think that was the point that I'm trying to make, is these are more, this is something we are trying to train or teach our department words to live by, right? I mean, this is something that I would teach my own children. These are, these are very important life lessons here. So, yes, we've had instances in the past year. We take those seriously, and we will deal with those, and we will ensure that the mindset is that unacceptable within our organization.
Alderwoman, hand out.
How's our, how are we doing as far as minority recruitment? That's always, I know that we're always out there, what's, how's the, how's that going?
I don't have the specific, specific numbers in front of me. I know Chief Winslow has been very successful with minority recruiting. I believe we currently have 31 total minorities, and please don't quote me on that, I have to get the exact numbers, but we do have a recruiting team. We reach out to, we utilize NOBLE, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Officers. We use academia within our communities. We use faith-based organizations within the community. And the best tool for recruiting is through word of mouth, through our, our men and women of our agency, and that's, that's been the hardest, the biggest push. Go, each officer should go find that one person that they trust worked inside beside them and, you know, bring them on board. So, I think minority recruiting is going to be a challenge as the days and months ahead, and as we, we get ready to test in the next couple of months, I mean, that's going to be very important, that we, we, we go pull from not only our community, but, you know, various other communities around us to say, we're looking for good quality candidates to come take our tests.
Alderwoman Redpath, then Donlin.
I just want to make clear that I do support these principles that have been brought before. I can't read them, so I would like to have them read before we decide to vote on this. But I want to follow up with, I've, I've been involved in law enforcement for a few years, and I can tell you that, as, I have a lot of knowledge about the local law enforcement training board, and I know that over the years, they have, they've added two more weeks of curricula based on de-escalation training and use of force. And, and that's one of the reasons that our department has changed their policies about the way they train during roll-call and then special sessions of of training. So, I can tell you that there is a lot of problems in this country with, with relationships between the police department and African-American folks. And I can just tell you right now that we're very lucky to have the police department we have. Chief Winslow has done a pretty darn good job, in my opinion, trying to do his best to bridge the gaps. And I know we got problems, we still got problems, we're always going to have problems, but we got to work this thing through. And we got to, we got to work not only to build our relationships, but build better police officers and and build better, a better department for our community. We got to reflect the people we serve, and and I know how tough it is for recruiting because I've been in the same boat, and so I know how hard it is for them to recruit. But we, as, as citizens of the city, have to help with our recruiting and bring good people to the police department of, of all different ethnic backgrounds. We need it, and I encourage that. So, thank you.
Alderwoman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor, if I understood you correctly, you said that the chief, Chief Winslow that is, might have some next steps forthcoming. Do you have an idea of what the timeline is on those?
Actually, we can bring them as soon as possible. I think that's up to the chief to bring them forward. I think they're meeting with other community groups, so I'll rely on when he thinks it's appropriate with regards to the policy changes. And again, I know some city council members are working on some items, you know, U.S. Conference of Mayors working on some items with the different groups, and so we'll have a collective input, and the collective body here will have to determine what makes the most sense to pass with all that information. The one thing I will add, I think the last graduate we just brought on, 11 officers, I think two were black males, two females, I believe, is, and the rest were white males, I believe, is how the mix was.
That's correct.
Chairman.
Alderwoman Proctor.
Quick question. So when the chief signs this, then does every officer in the force sign this too?
We didn't physically sign it. Each officer was given a copy. It was essentially, we have platoon meetings where a sergeant has five or six officers, and they talk about hot topics, training, that sort of thing. This was covered specifically step-by-step amongst the platoon meetings. So, not only is it something that the chief did, it was something that, you know, we ensured each one of our officers was aware of it and understood the significance of it.
I guess my point is, you seem to take, when you sign something, you seem to take a little more ownership of it after you sign it. So is this something that could be dispersed and signed by every patrol officer out there?
I don't see why not.
Anyone else?
I know, Mr., you, you want to read those now, the principles?
I will.
I think we need a motion for, I think it was for a discussion.
It's still for discussion.
Okay, thank you. How about this? I, I just want to touch on this briefly. Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I definitely was listening earlier, and and I just want to see, you know, with, with some of these recommendations and things that are going to come in from people who, you know, have, have, have been around some while in, in law enforcement and not, I, I just want to keep the focus to make sure that we reach out to some, to some new individuals with some different experiences to, to give some different experience. And then, and then I just want us to all really, we had some great conversations, I heard some really good things, but it was one thing that lingered, is we all said, we know we're going to still have problems, racial problems. We all agree with that. You, Deputy Chief, Alderwoman Redpath, so we're all acknowledging that, you know, going forth, we're going to have more problems, you know, and, 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 you know, it worries me, it troubles me. You know, we, we, we have some strides to go in, in some areas, you know, and, and, you know, I, I never want this, this, this thing that we're fighting, you know, it, it brings me back, and I wanted to be brief, but this, this, this thing that we're talking about, this racism thing that we're talking about, it is serious. People send out death threats. People tell us to watch our backs. Homeland Security reported in 2006 that one of the greatest threats to peaceful marchers, protesters, people who support the advancement of black people was groups of white men who didn't like that. In 2011, they had that same report. In 2019, September, they had that same type of report. This is serious. This is not no game where you speak out for it. This is real. So we, we, we have to understand that, that there's, there's a culture, you know, not only there and, and in this entire thing, that, 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 that we have to be mindful, we have to be careful. And, and, and I just want to reiterate to, to, to everyone that this is a serious thing. This is not just a, oh, yeah, we got racism, you know, we're going to handle it and, you know, move on. This is serious. Like, you know, people have to change the way that their lives is, is lived. History has taught us that people die when they fight and stand up for these things. So that's, you know, all I want to say on this topic, and is there anyone else on discussion?
May I just finish with one point?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say thank you to you for your comments regarding the fact that we do have some great men and women that work for our organization. I'm very proud of, of the hard-working men and women, and we will continue to strive to do better. That's what we have to do.
For sure. All right. Appreciate you.
Alderwoman, time, I'm sorry.
You know, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but it goes without saying that we all know that we have good officers. So I don't know why that has to be said. Every, every time we have a discussion about law enforcement, that has to be said, or else people take offense to it, or they think that you don't believe that. So, I think everybody, everybody in this whole city understands that we have good police officers. I think that everyone has heard me, every time I ever have a conversation with anyone about Springfield Police Department, I am overly complimentary to Chief Winslow and how much I, I admire him and how, and how much he's done for the department and, and, you know, and, and all of that. So, that goes without saying. However, with any organization, I, I don't care what that organization is, with it, with any organization, there are standards that we ex, we expect the members of that organization to not only adhere to, but to meet. And if those standards, and, and, and we don't just write, we don't just write it down and say, this is what we want you to do, we don't say, this is what we hope you will do. We, we have policies and procedures in place that specifically lay out what those standards are. But we also have, to accompany that, written guidelines and, and policies and procedures as to what happens if you don't meet those standards. And so, you know, I, again, I think that, as a city, we have affirmed that we support these ten principles. I'm going to say it again for the people in the back, I support the ten principles. I think that it's a great starting point, but I also think that we have to put some kind of meat onto it so that everybody in the organization knows the ten, what the ten principles are, and knows how they inter, how they interact and are interjected into the organization, what the standard is, and what the, what the penalty is if you don't meet that, if you don't meet that standard. In my other life at the Illinois Department of Public Health, I actually developed, implemented, evaluated, and, and, and provided cultural competency training. And the director at that time mandated everyone in the department to take advantage of that training. However, that wasn't the only thing that happened. We also put policies and procedures in place as to, and guidelines on how you were to utilize the, the standards and principles that were given to you during that training in your everyday work. And if, and, and if you did not meet them, this was what would happen, and it became part of your evaluation. So everybody understood what the, what the standard was, everybody understood how it interacted with their work, everyone understood what would happen if you, if you didn't meet those standards. And, and I just think that there's a, that those last two or three steps are missing here. So, again, we have some mighty fine officers in the Springfield Police Department. Can we all agree on that? Can we all agree that we all love the ten principles? We all agree on that, but I don't know if everybody else wants to agree with the next thing I'm thing I'm going to say. There just needs to be more to follow with how we implement those principles within the department and how officers are held to that standard and what happens if they don't meet the standard.
Thank you. Anyone else? All righty. It was up for discussion. Do I have a?
Move on. Would you like them read?
We need to make a motion to send it to the...
No, we don't. There was a motion for discussion, so it just stays there.
You don't need, I don't think we need to have it read unless we're going to vote on it. That's all I was asking.
Correct. So, thank you. And we, we distributed that, again, Corporation Council, you said to everyone so they can read it and, and know what that is. Correct. Thank you.
Ready?
Go ahead, Mr. Let's...
2020, 274. An ordinance authorizing relocation expenses of $1,900 to Hanson Professional Services Incorporated for relocation of the personal property located at parcel SR 0070, 1108 North 10th Street for Segment 6 of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project.
Motion for consent.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No nays? Ayes have it?
2020, 275. An ordinance submitting Chapter 37, Article 6 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended relating to the Deferred Compensation Committee.
Drive a motion?
Move to debate.
Second.
Move to debate by Alderman Senzo, seconded by Hanauer. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Mayor, can you tell us if there, you were going to look into, see what this is about? Did you guys have a meeting on this? Can you tell us?
You mean the compensation?
Yes.
They did meet on that and put out an RFP to request proposals. And that's where it's at at this point. No further action will be taken until the full committee comes into existence.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to hold, to table this ordinance.
Second.
Alderman Howard, do you still have us on the side?
Table, table the motions, not the Babel.
Thank you. I appreciate you, sir. All right. So I have a motion to table this ordinance, seconded by Alderman Conley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it?
2020, 276. An ordinance submitting Chapter 110 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended related to convenience stores.
Motion for consent.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, could you explain this? I think this was, this was in result of stuff, late night stuff. I just kind of wanted to...
It's, it wasn't actually, I will say that it's a, it's a concern that has been raised by constituents as well as, you know, I see it all the time myself, and it's been ongoing for a long time. And I know that Alderman Gregory and I had, have been talking about bringing ordinances to address some things, and this is one of those. So what it would really, what it does is that I found out through discussions with Corporation Council and the mayor that convenience stores without gasoline sales, and that's what these are, only convenience stores without gasoline sales, are not licensed or registered or, or anything by, by the city. They just operate however they want to operate. And most of them are clustered in certain areas of the city. And like I said, they operate without any regulatory oversight or enforcement. So this would require them to, to be licensed, and it's a very small fee. It's only $100 for a year. It was set hours of operation. Right now, there are no set hours of operation. They can just be open and closed however they want. And it also curtails loitering, because if you look at it, it, it says that there can only be five people on the parking lot during specific hours. I think it's between 1:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m., which is basically when the business should be closed, you know, should be closed anyway. And it, the other thing, it says that items must be sold in their original packaging. So I think that it, it addresses some problems and concerns that constituents have and, and that I have. And it also goes a long way to rebuild communities. We have a situation now where, and again, these are clustered in, basically, most of them are in Ward 2 and 3. I'll just be real honest about it. And it's almost one of those situations where someone's driving down the street, they see an empty building. It could be a small, empty building, and they just, you know, it's a pop-up convenience store. And it, it also is, is kind of predatory, because you're, you're preying on, on a neighborhood where people may or may not have transportation and, you know, a number of other things. And so I think that, you know, just putting some type of, of licensure and regulatory oversight is a good thing.
If you don't mind, and I'm, I'm 100% for this. I under...
No, I'm more than happy to.
My concern was, are, okay, so if we do this, do they go to the places that have gas at that point? Or, I, I, I mean, I guess my question is, are we going far enough?
Well, I think...
You know, or are we, we going to start here and maybe look, see how things go down the road?
Yeah, can we do that? You don't want me to send them out there to, to Thornton?
No, I don't, I just, I just wanted, you know, I'm...
It's only a joke, only a joke.
I just wanted to make sure that we are going, you know, that, that we're going far enough.
So we'll see what happens with it. Okay, thank you.
Alderman.
I think that covered part of my answer. I'll, I'll talk to Alderman Turner in private.
I mean, you know, it's, it's a good sound ordinance. And, and like Alderman Turner said, it's really to address some things that really, you know, we were thinking about before. And, and, and of course, like I, I told one of our friends from the media, there's things that go on in this city that, that's going to catch our eye. I mean, and, and, you know, speed up the process. If, if it's a hole in the road that's deep and people keep calling, and we're, we're going to look into it a lot faster. And, and this is the same situation. And, you know, you know, we have some, some calls and complaints and things on, on this atmosphere for some time. And, you know, I, I've, I've been there. So I, I understand what goes on clearly. And, and, you know, so, so this is good things, and, and it won't be perfect. And we'll, we'll have to, you know, like Alderman Hanauer said, we, we may have to look at some things in the future, and we'll, we'll do that as it comes. So...
I think that's a good ordinance.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
So no nays? Ayes have it?
2020, 277. An ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of grant number AJC ZZ 03066 from the Illinois Primary Healthcare Association, IPHCA, in an amount of $16,500 for funding for the 2020 census and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in an amount of $16,500 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have nothing else. Any old business? Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. If I could, I have a question for the mayor. I've been getting inquiries about the rent assistance program, and I was wondering if you could give us an update on the status of that and when people might be able to start applying for that program.
What, what program was it?
The, the rental assistance payments through the, the CARES money that we have.
Yeah.
So, sorry, I was going to ask, so could you talk about the whole thing? Because I was going to ask the same thing.
Maybe, maybe could I just say, Chair, I'd go ahead and concede my, second half of my questioning to Alderman Turner, and we'll get both of our questions out at once.
Yeah, because I, if you could talk about the whole program.
As far as the rental assistance, working with the Urban League on that, we had a conference call. Director Yezel had coordinated. And so they're working through that process. So that piece will be forthcoming. With regards to the business piece, Justine Peterson, they informed me, they have secured, I think it's about $1.25 million from banks to create the loan pool of funds. And they're working through that process. So hopefully, within the next week or two, that will be forthcoming as well.
So if I can ask, Mayor, do we have a timeline for the rental assistance? Because my understanding is there hasn't been an extension that I know of on the, of the governor's executive order on halting evictions. So that, that ends in July. Do we know, will people be able to start applying for that money before the end of July?
That's a COVID question. So I guess Economic Development would have to answer that. That's where I got kind of caught in the crosshairs. If you want a proper term with regards to that, with HUD and the approval process and moving in that direction. So I think that's where the delays come. But I think, can people go back and apply for it? I think that's a question we'll have to get a determination from Housing and Urban Development associated with it. If you can justify the expense and meet their guidelines through CDBG funds, then it will be allowable. But as far as the timeline, if there is a timeline, I'm not sure. I think you probably could go back retroactively. But we'd have to get that directly from HUD.
I, I guess for, I'm sorry, for, for the timeline question, I meant, do we know how soon we will have our program or Urban League will have a program available for people to start applying to?
Yeah, we'll check with Director Yezel tomorrow and let you know what the status is.
Okay. Because I just, I, I know I've, I've had people concerned in Ward 8 with July, the end of July coming. It's...
Yeah, I guess what they should, I'd recommend that they apply through the state of Illinois. I mean, they have one, theirs might be up and running already. I'm not sure. I haven't followed up with that. And that's, that could be an option as well, or as well as Capital Township. They have rental assistance. So there's avenues out there. So if they haven't done so, I would check with the, and it's really for the landlords. The landlords should check, or the renters can, but it goes directly to the landlords.
Correct.
So the individuals that own the property, that's what I would recommend is that they do contact those other alternative means, as well as call our Office of Economic Development.
Okay. So, so if someone, I, I guess I've been kind of thinking of sending people to, to Community Assistance, to Director Horta. So should I send them to, if people have questions, they should be directed to Economic Development Office?
He has the list. I mean, he has a list he's been working with. So he will follow back up with them. He's been dealing with, I think mainly the renters. But you can do either way.
Okay, thank you.
He'll follow up with Economic Development and have that direct communication. But if it's a landlord and they want to know when the program's going, when will I get my money, the better point person would be Director Yezel.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. And I know we're, we're looking at more grant opportunities through DCEO for, for, for business loans and whatnot. So again, I, I know there are businesses in Ward 8 that have had, have taken some pretty painful hits, not just the restaurant industry, which is, is obvious. But, so if we could just, you know, continue any updates that you get, Mayor, through, through your, your channels, I would appreciate it. And I'll certainly share those too.
Sure will.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Turner?
No, that was, actually, my question was if we had gotten, because I think the last time I asked about it, because Alderman, Alderman Conley is right. People are, even though we still have the moratorium on CWLP shut offs, the, the whole renter thing is becoming pretty problematic. And I don't think, I don't think the landlords are going to take the leap and try to check it out. They're going to ask the renter for their money, and if they don't have it, they're going to smooth to evict. So I was, one, so my question is, have we, because I think part of it, I was told, was that there was a holdup with HUD on receiving approval. So did we get the approval from HUD? And now is, now we're just waiting to, to implement locally?
Yeah, I don't know if Director Yezel's on. She, if she zoomed in, I'm not sure if she has. But with regards to landlords and they're thinking about giving someone the boot, I would strongly recommend against that, because I'm not sure if you take that action, do you get reimbursed for the previous months? I'm not sure. And so that's, if you've evicted somebody, that's a key component. I think it's, you have to have the renter, you know, in place to receive the rent that you would like to be reimbursed for. So if you gave them a, you know, say you kicked them out today, and then a month from now they're asking for reimbursement, I'm not sure if, if you can go back. That's something we'd have to find out.
Mayor, Mayor, I can speak to most of those questions now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. To Alderman Turner, Alderman Turner, the, yes, we can go back, we can pay for three months, as long as it starts at the beginning of COVID. This is anything that has affected homeowners with rental assistance that started during COVID. So we can go back and pay up to three months. HUD allows us to pay for three months of, of rental assistance. And when we did the amendment, we set up to $1,000. So, so that, whatever it is, three months or $1,000 is, is the amount that we have put forth in our amendment. So, you know, if it was March, April, May, that, that's fine. We can do that. I do know that when we spoke with the Urban League, they're also getting funds. So hopefully, without commingling or without, you know, replicating funds, they may have some funds also available very soon for assistance. And let me see, what else did you ask?
Did, did, so HUD has approved our plan, and we're, we're in local implementation?
Yes, they approved the plan for the rental assistance. And I was hoping if we could get the sub-recipient agreement looked at and approved, I, I was kind of hoping, fingers crossed, that we can have that on first read next week. But that could be pushing it a little bit. But, you know, that's what my, my hope would be.
That would be good. Because I will tell you that some people have already called me and said that they've already received eviction notices.
I'm hearing some of that, too.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, because they're not supposed to evict till the end of July. So I, that probably, I, I would not be surprised at that.
Yeah, some people already have eviction notices right now.
Right. Now, if they do get eviction notices, the one thing you can tell them to do is to go to, oh gosh, what program is it? Capital Township. Capital Township will, the only way that they provide funds is if you've gotten eviction notice. So they can go to Capital Township. If they're in Capital Township, they can go there too for funding.
But do they have to be, in order to receive funding from Capital Township, do they have to meet Capital Township qualifications?
I, I'm not sure what qualifications there are.
I mean, Capital Township is like single...
They won't even look at it. Pardon me? Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
They, they, part of it is, obviously, you have to be in Capital Township. And the other qualification is that you have to receive an eviction notice.
And follow the income guidelines, I do believe, like CDBG funds.
Yeah. And then I think, I think with Capital Township, though, there's also something that you're single and, I mean, there's a whole list of things. I don't want to...
Corporation Council, you want to add to the conversation?
Say, because I don't want to misspeak, but...
She was talking about the eviction, if they do evict, yours?
I was simply going to say that I think that the, what Val was indicating is that the sub-recipient agreement should be ready for first reading this, this coming next time. And it seems to me, and we can look at this, but I think we could, because there is some flexibility there, make a rule ourselves that would say that if a landlord has evicted a tenant, then they're not eligible to get reimbursement for that tenant's money. Meaning, if they evict, they're never going to get paid.
Right.
So I think we could have a rule within that process that would help have a landlord hopefully exercise common sense, just as a pure economic benefit.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Alderman Conley?
Thank you, thank you. I, I would, I would strongly encourage that we make an addition like that. And also, if we could do, if the city could do outreach to the Landlords Association just to make sure that they're aware of this and really get publicity around, you know, working with people right now as opposed to, I mean, I, I know it's been, it's been a difficult, frustrating time for everybody, everybody. But if we could just get that word out that, that we do have funds coming, as Director Yezel has pointed out, we, we could possibly even have this available for next week. But we can, we, we, we have this process in, in place. We're making strides, and it is worth taking the time to work with renters to get this assistance available. We definitely need to get this word out, because I, I am hearing from people who are, are worried that they're going to be, you know, August 1, they're going to be out the door. And obviously, the eviction process is a process that doesn't happen overnight. But, you know, when you, when you've had this as much stress as everyone has, I, I think the more reassurance that we can give people that we're here to work with them and we're going, we have a process in place would, would be very useful and helpful.
Alderman, just so you know, I have been in close contact with the Landlord Association... Alderman, just so you know, I have been in close contact with the Landlord Association, Stella Dean. I probably haven't talked to her in a couple of weeks, but I, she is like the first person I'll be calling as soon as we're ready. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Any other discussion?
I get new business?
Yes, sir. Okay. New business?
Director, has there been a water increase that we don't know about? I get some calls today that their water bills were like doubled. Is that, is that just a spot thing?
I thought Cecil was just watering the ground.
Well, no, I, I mean, did we do something that raised them? Okay.
I mean, if there could be a biller or something that.
I'm gonna have him come in, I'm gonna have the people come in and have them check their bills with you guys tomorrow. That's all I'm asking.
They cut it in the commercial office, they'll get it straightened out.
Okay. And then one other thing for Director Bottom. I was called out to West Lake Drive and Circle Drive today. That's actually Lake Town. It's, it's right between Alderman Turner's and Eyes Ward on the corner. They put the fence across the bridge there for the highway, and it's, I know there's an obstruction there. Well, now they put a no-left-turn sign on that stop sign, so people coming out of Lake Town can't turn to go to Stevenson Drive. They have to go all the way back through their subdivision on the other side to get out. Is there a way you could look at that to see if we can make a compromise with that? Cause that's very inconvenient for those folks that live on the, and they're not in the city, but they're in between the city. So, and they come out on a city road. Would you please take a look at that and see if there's a way we can adjust that sign so people can get out to go to Stevenson Drive?
Yeah, we'll work with IDOT on that.
Okay. And not that I, this is a big deal, but are we starting on Hilltop this next week?
It is a big deal. It's a very big deal.
Never heard of it. They're having the pre-construction meeting, and they should be starting shortly.
That's all I wanted to hear, brother. Thank you.
Any other new business? Nate, I just wanna say thank you to you and Mr. Harris and, and the public tour crew for, you know, helping out and picking up that stuff Monday morning. We appreciate you guys, and, you know, all the guys work hard. I appreciate you. Any other new business? Any other citizens, any citizens?
Doug Brownies.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown. I appreciate you looking at the lights.
Somebody just reminded me that it could be, the sewer rates went up, you know, for the district, so that could be an issue, so. Just wanted to make sure. People double-check their bills.
So I should tell them to call Greg Humphries?
Just double-check, make sure.
Thank you. Any others? Any citizens signed up to speak, Mr. Lusko?
Yes, we have James Meister.
Your name for the record, sir?
Excuse me?
Your name for the record?
Name is James Meister, one sixty Forest Avenue, lot number one, Springfield. I usually come here for one reason, then as I listen, I hear a few more reasons I get to speak on. One thing is, is as a citizen of Springfield, I've been here about twelve years now, and it's time I finally speak up about the bickering. I mean, I'm ashamed of the way people act at these meetings. If you have a problem with another alderman at a time, you guys do have the right to hold the meeting, go into private counsel, deal with the problem, and then come back as to not embarrass our entire government system here. Calling people racists and sexist. And I've actually, in other meetings, heard swear words and everything else right out here. That should not be in this room. You have the right to adjourn for a few minutes, take it in, close doors, and handle it. Now, I posted a reply, and I've gotten several phone calls myself as far as threats, comments of gratitude that I spoke up about what happened last time. And it's not just based on color or anything else. Anybody that speaks up, be it a politician, a lawyer, police officer, private citizens, we all get threatened. Unfortunately, it's something this society should not be doing. We're all in agreement with that. As far as what went on, is it right, is it wrong? That's as far as I'm gonna lead that one. I'm gonna do something that maybe a lot of people have never done here. I'm coming out. Bisexual. I've dated both men and women. I'm a white guy named Meister. I'm German. But my family moved here alone before the Holocaust of the Jewish. I've dated black, white. I don't care about color. Racism, sexism, homophobia, all of this is just getting way out of hand, way too far. Now, we're gonna go to the Police Department, Springfield Police Department. Granted, there are some good officers on there. There are some bad officers on there. It's not the fact of implementing the ten things. They are implemented very well. I am a convicted felon, and I'm saying that. I got a conviction for a felony for intimidation of a witness. I got in a fight with a DCFS caseworker twenty years ago. Because of this, I've been ridiculed, threatened by police officers. I have been in the same position as that gentleman that died with a police officer's knee on my neck. But I'm white, and that never made the news. It never made a complaint. I had a Springfield officer arrest me for arson of my own home when I was at work. Spent a year in jail. They dismissed charges because we don't have any evidence. Come to find out, I read the papers, and it says even the insurance company did two different investigations and said there was no evidence. Why did they arrest me? Because one of the guys involved, apparently, I was dating his niece at the time, and he was a convicted murderer of a Sangamon County officer, and they wanted to get him. I'm a convicted felon, so I'm an easy target. I'm also poor. I can't afford to pay a lawyer. If you look and go through some of the paperwork, and which I have over the years, our east side response time is at least forty-five minutes. West side, six minutes. It's not about color. It's about money. It's about, if you can afford it, or what's on the computer that it says about you. I got one felony conviction. It was an argument over the telephone. But yet, I've also been pulled over on a lawnmower going down a Springfield street. Six officers at gunpoint. File a complaint, who do we complain to? And then I'll end this. Who do we complain to? We complain to Springfield Police Department. It's a good boy, good old boy system. It doesn't matter whether it's a good cop, bad cop, or what. It was wrong. The minute they asked me for a registration and insurance on a lawnmower, I filed the complaints. I'd never heard any replies back to it. What we need is somebody to oversee this and not the Springfield Police Department. My suggestion? Take three citizens from City of Springfield. Take three aldermen from here. Take three state police officers. State. Somebody that has no ties with Springfield, and then allow city council to oversee the meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Meister, your time is up. I apologize. Is there any, anyone that would like to speak? Alderman Turner?
So I just have two things to say. Number one, no, we don't have the right to go into the other room and talk about it and then come back out. That would be against the Open Meetings Act. And unless we're in executive session, which there are specific rules about executive session. And I take exception to the gentleman that stood at that podium and called me a bitch during a, during a city council meeting, talking to me about decorum in this room. So, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Good job, Dorsey.